Hi, I'm Jim Shaw, publisher of the Lexington Times and Chair of the Board of Lexington Media. I'm pleased to be with, sitting here today with Kathleen Lenahan, who is running for a third term on the Lexington School Committee. I know you've become a fixture. I remember when you first got elected, you, I was at your swearing in at Cary Hall.
That's right.
Right out in the foyer there. And I remember that, and it was an exciting moment. So that's, that's sort of where it began for you. And I, and little did you know, it would be this commitment, this, what, six years behind you.
Right.
Looking for three more, for obvious reasons. And I'm going to ask you, I understand why, you know, that you've got so many major projects on your plate. And you, my feeling is you probably want to continue with them and see them through, because you've been such a big part of them. But let me, rather than me say it, let's ask you, why are you re-elected?
And I will say, and it's actually, I've completed seven years, because when I was sworn in, that's right, I was finishing the final year of Bill Hurley's term. And then the next year, I ran for my three terms.
By the way, I'm glad he's doing well.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I just absolutely love him.
He was a wonderful voice on the school committee, and they were big shoes to step into.
We were very fortunate to have him, and we're still fortunate. I know he was faced with a very serious health challenge.
Yes, yes.
Bill, if you're watching, nice to see you.
Absolutely. Yeah, so definitely when I started, yeah, you're really thinking, okay, first I have this one year, and then, you know, it's another three years, and then they add up. And, and it's been, been quite a while. And we have had a real major commitment to our facilities management and building program since I've been on there. We've rebuilt Hastings, and we've built a townwide preschool. That was a major accomplishment, because previously, our youngest, our littlest learners were going, they were sort of nomads in various places. So it was really wonderful to give them a permanent home. And we renovated the both middle schools. And, and I was the co-chair of the debt exclusions for both that Hastings project, that also included the fire station, as well as the middle school projects. And now we've moved on to, you know, the real, the main attraction, the big event, which is the LHS project.
Right.
Many years in the making, we submitted an SOI multiple times. And it was finally accepted, and we were invited into the MSBA program, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in, in 2022. And then you're sort of off to the races, and...
Because they only, they, they choose projects, right?
Yes.
It's not like you can apply for the MSBA funds, but it doesn't guarantee you're going to get them.
Oh, absolutely not. So the MS, prior to that, there was something else, and this is definitely before my time, but I think it was called the school building, it was the SBA maybe? And that was really, you sort of got in line, and you just waited, and you got to the front of the line, and then you, you got a new school. But that became just cost prohibitive for the state. And you had some schools wondering, well, should I, how much should I be investing in maintaining it? If then we're going to get a new school? So with the MSBA, now you, you fill out that statement of interest, and they, they determine, they say, this is how much money we have, this, these are how many projects we can handle. And they issue those invitations. Like Burlington has applied, I mean, year after year after year for their high school. And it just, it just hasn't happened yet for them. You know, fingers crossed it will.
And it's important for people to understand that, because, you know, why are we waiting so long? Because the town couldn't afford to do it on, it's entirely on its own. And the programs are made to assist these communities like ours, in order to get these schools built.
Oh, absolutely. Even a very well-resourced community such as Lexington, these projects are just monumentally expensive. And it, and it outstrips even our ability to fund that on our own. And the way the MSBA does the reimbursement, not every community gets the same reimbursement, which is fair, because if Chelsea cannot afford to spend as much on a school building project as Lexington does. So our reimbursement rate is approximately a quarter for every dollar we spent. And that's approximate, and there are things the MSBA will cover, and things it won't cover. But, and that, you know, and if the high school project, and it's, and it's, it's a large amount, that is, can be a little, can be a little scary. But, you know, the placeholder we have at the moment is $400 million. And a quarter of that is $100 million that the state is going to...
It's not chump change.
It is absolutely not chump change. And I know, and there's, and sometimes people are like, wait, but how could it cost that much money? And how is it even more expensive than Waltham? We have one of the largest high schools in the state. And I think many people don't understand that, that they sort of, they think of, well, Lexington, well, it must be, our high school must be like, you know, Concord, Carlyle, or Dover, Sherbrooke. You know, we think about those peer communities we compare, you know, we compare ourselves to. But they have much smaller student population.
People come to Lexington for the schools. And then so, with such a great interest in it, people are moving in, you know, with school age children, and it's really driving, it drives the numbers up. We have very large graduating classes.
Yes, very large.
You know, I was listening to WBC last night, Nightside. I don't necessarily agree with the host most of the time. But he had somebody on, they were talking about what's been going on down in Brockton. And they were saying that they're the largest high school in the state. And they've said something about 3,800 students.
Yeah, Brock, yeah.
But still, I mean, we, we have approximately, what, 600, 700 students in four different classes each?
Not quite. We're about at 2,300 students.
It's still large.
Oh, it's very large. I mean, if you, if you went to just, you know, Google the high schools in Massachusetts by size, Lexington is going to be right up there at the top, you know, for a town of 34,000 people. It's just, it's a large number. And, and construction is, you know, it's, it's X is, you know, the cost per square footage, and Y is your square footage. And when you're building a high school for 2,400 students, which is, it's actually 2,395, but I'll just round up to 2,400, that's a lar, that's a large facility.
Right. And, and it's, it, I remember, you know, the, being, I graduated class of '79, and we hadn't yet done any major renovations to the campus, maybe with the exception of adding the Science Building or something. But I actually kind of loved the California campus concept, being able to walk outside, even if it was under, you know, a little bit of a, of a cover. Just get a little fresh air when you're going in between classes, so. But, and I'm not saying they should do that here.
No, I, I also love that, and that we've done many visioning sessions, we have focus groups going on, and that has been a recurring theme. Everybody loves that, getting out into fresh air. We just have to balance that with safety in the 21st century. And you just, you know, you want to talk about it, but we...
Well, you need to talk about it, but still, as much as you hate to.
As much as you hate to, in the United States, we have a problem that other places don't have. And at the moment, anyone can walk right into the middle of the LHS campus. And that is something we do not want to have going forward. But you can have, and you can have an open quad in a school that is only accessible to students in the school. You know, and I think that's maybe something we would look at.
I hope so. You mentioned a $400 million marker or so. I mean, I think by the time this comes to fruition, it's probably going to be more. But, you know, and I'm, and I'm playing guessing games here, but let's face it. I mean, every, all, the amount, every time we put it off a little longer, the costs go up exponentially, you know, because of building costs and all of this, construction costs, materials, all of that. So anyway, so, but, but you have been the head of the building, the school building group in Lexington, the working group.
Yes.
Is, do they have official titles for that?
It's the School Building Committee.
Okay.
The LHS School Building Committee.
Right. So you've been a central figure in the whole, the talks of, as you said at the outset, some of the, you know, the renovations of the, the two middle schools. I'm sure Mariah Hastings, that fell, that came through on...
Well, there are little, so, so we have the School Building Committee, and then we have a debt exclusion campaign. So those are very, those are different. And, and sometimes, you know, they definitely, there's overlap in that many of the, I'm hoping many of the people, you know, especially our community members, who are involved with the School Building Committee. Once, that, that's all about, what are we doing? Like, what kind of building are we doing? What, how are we choosing the OPM and the designer? And the debt exclusion campaign, that comes a little bit later, where we need to really go out into the public. I mean, not that we all, we are engaging with the public as much as we can. But that's when you really get down to brass tacks, like, okay, so here's... Now we have to pay for it. Now we have to pay for it, and here's why we think that this is a vital, vital moment, a time for our community to approve this.
Pardon my ignorance on this, but because of the size and scope of the project, I assume that the, the high school will have, will fall under that sort of debt exclusion?
Oh, yeah.
So the, basically, the community has to come and support it. They have to say yes, this is something we need to do.
Town meeting has to support it, and, and the, and then we have the townwide, the townwide debt exclusion.
And it's done, when we do the debt exclusion, we, we fund it through mostly bonding and...
I believe so, yes, yes.
It doesn't come out of the tax base, right? We pay for it, obviously. Everything gets paid for out of the tax base, eventually.
Everything, everything gets paid for, but it will take place. And I, and I think, and I remember at our precinct meetings, I think I heard Charles Lamb talking about some, some development in terms of the length of time we can have the bonds for. I thought there was, there was a positive development, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure what that was. So the idea is, yes, it's, it's like, you know, most people, when they want to buy a house, they can't just plunk down all of that money in cash to buy a house. You know, you, you have a mortgage. And, and the, and one of the good things that the town has done, we have a really great capital stabilization fund. So we're, we're putting money aside for the high school project. And what it allows us to do is, it shaves those really harsh peaks off of, of any increases that people will have in their property taxes. And the other thing to remember is that as we move forward with the high school project, there are other projects that we have taken out those bonds for, they, they do get paid off. So, so as you, you know, you pay off something, and that allows room to take on that debt. So it maintains it in a way, it will sort of hopefully blunt the impact to individual property owners.
I was in town meeting when they, when they, when all the conversation about having a stabilization fund became necessary, because it was impacting bond ratings and such. And, and I remember that this is just sort of a shout out to Norm, Norm Cohen, when he was on the board. He really spent a lot of time sort of shoring up and making sure things are in place for a solid bond rating. And that helps, because, because every, every little percentage point, or a fraction of a percentage point adds, when you're talking about $400, $500 million, it adds a significant amount of money to the, to the cost of the project.
No, it does. And, and I will say, and one other, and think something about the high school is, I think, I know for some people who may be thinking, I don't know, it's a lot of money, not sure I want to do that. The high school requires, even if we weren't building a new high school, we are, I mean, we are, it's tough. Taking care of it as it is. Mike Cronin, our Director of Public Facilities, says, I mean, he gets all the credit in the world for basically like holding together an HVAC system that is, absolutely needs to be replaced with, you know, just, you know, fingers crossed, and...
We're lucky to have Mike. Mike is extraordinary.
And so that repair in and of itself, just replacing the HVAC system for the high school, that could cost as much as $100 million. And the state isn't giving us any money for that. And then we have undersized classrooms, so, so...
And it's amazing, our students do so well when they're really, the resources are stretched, really.
Yeah, I mean, we have wonderful teachers, but you need to give them, you need to give them the right tools, the right facility. It is amazing, when people from other schools come in, they're like, this is Lexington High School? This is, hmm, interesting.
But it, but from your perspective, you know, as somebody who's been involved in the process, I mean, you know, you want to be there to see it through.
Oh, absolutely. That is, that's part of, so this three years, that will, so if I'm re-elected on, on March 5th, and I serve this, this three-year term, that will get us to construction, you know, to shovels in the ground. And that's a huge milestone, because as anybody knows who's done a, a house renovation or built something, by the time the, they're actually building it, you've, you've made all of the major decisions. It's not to say there aren't decisions that come up, and I'm remembering when it's like, oh, wait, I needed to pick out cabinet handles, like, things like that. So obviously, there are still decisions that need to be made all the way through. But the biggies have, have been done, so.
And creating streamlines and efficiencies, you know, for, for heating. And, you know, I know there was some talk about, you know, saving money through, you know, making sure that we're using the most efficient means and taking, you know, in renewable energies and all of that stuff. So, and I'm sure all of that's going to be taken into consideration.
Absolutely. All of it will be taken into consideration, as well as lessons we've learned from the pandemic. You know, what, what we learned is that we have to have good indoor air quality. And by good indoor air quality, you know, we measure the carbon dioxide parts per million. And you, if you, outside, it's like 420 parts per million. And we know that there, there are places indoors, it's like, oh, it's 1,500 parts per million. That's not good. I mean, that's when, not only, not only will that keep you from getting sick with COVID, you know, having fresh air, it keeps you from getting sick with lots of things. And we, that keeps children in school, it keeps teachers from getting sick. You know, if kids don't get sick, then their parents don't get sick as much. The more, it has cognitive benefits. So that's something that, you know, we're, we're looking to take those lessons.
Well, I'm glad we seem to be, you know, we're, we're heading in the direction of actually having a new high school.
Yes.
I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, and I thank you for the work you've done on it so far. The, as I mentioned before, the Boston Globe recently ran a series of articles talking about literacy in some of our more affluent communities in greater Boston. Lexington was mentioned in these articles, talking about, you know, I'm not going to say that kids can't read, but it pointed out to me, you know, I thought, you know, it began with a sort of a broad brush. And if people didn't really dig down and read the articles, they would say, oh my God, our kids are illiterate. But that's not the case.
No.
There are segments within the school population where they, where it's been revealed that they're, that they're testing less than adequate in literacy. And a lot of it, you know, the focus then comes on curriculum, you know, phonetics versus other means. And I know we, we employ a certain curriculum in the Lexington schools. What was your takeaway from the article, of the series of articles?
Um, I mean, one takeaway is that it is really great that people are focused on literacy. You know, this is super, I mean, what, what can be more important than learning how, how to read in elementary school? It is the, it's the foundation for literally everything else we're doing. So I am glad that has this focus. And I am glad if the state wants to deploy resources to help districts who, who again, don't have the, the resources that Lexington does, to go out and to find new curriculums and to training and whatever, to allow those districts to get the tools they need to better serve their students. So that is, that isn't, that is a good thing. In terms of what is happening in Lexington, it wasn't, it wasn't a surprise in that we had a, a presentation on the MCAS results back in the fall. And those MCAS results are broken down, and we have by subgroups. We have a wonderful administrator, Dr. Maureen Kavanaugh, whose official job title I'm blanking on at the moment. But she, she walks us through all kinds of data, including the MCAS results. And it was highlighted there that, no, we have an issue with some subgroups, some, who are not reading as proficiently as we would like, you know, as evidenced by those tests. And we talked about that. So, and we know that this is something that needs to be addressed. Now, that doesn't mean you can just snap your fingers and just fix it. So our message at that meeting was, okay, so we need to figure out what's happening. We need administrators to really dig into this data. We need to determine why, you know, what is, what, what impediments are there that are preventing those students from being more successful? And then to have a plan for how to fix it. We haven't yet had, you know, that, they haven't, haven't yet come back to us to say all those things, because again, it takes time. So that, the goal was, all right, this is now the fall. So in the spring, we're going to hear, all right, what, what are we going to be doing about this? What are, what, we've identified a problem, now we need to have some solutions.
Is everything on the table? I mean, people are talking about phonetics, you know, when I, what, I, I think when I was younger, they employed phonetics as part of the program, learning to read. I was in Arrington School myself.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
It, it made a difference. It seemed to be successful, but, you know...
It does. It's reading...
Everybody has different learning styles.
Everybody has different learning styles, which is why you always need to be able to employ a wide range of tools, because what works for one student will not work for another student. But when it comes to phonics, yes. I mean, when I was back at, at St. Dennis Catholic School in Chicago, in the, in the 70s, learning how to read.
Were the nuns good to you?
The nun, um, some of the nuns were good to me. Yes, some of them were a little tough, yeah. Yeah, that, we had phonics. And then I, I distinctly remember my mother-in-law, she was an elementary teacher. She taught third grade at a school in Newton. And I remember, maybe this was sometime in the 90s, hearing about whole language. I'm like, what is that? So, oh, okay, so we've switched on them, because people are always looking for different ways for how to teach children to remember. People who are in elementary education, they, they are passionate about teaching kids to read. That's what they want to do. Now, and there was the feeling, well, maybe this phonics-based wasn't working, so we're going to try this. And then, then it turns out, okay, that wasn't working as well as we wanted. We're going to go back to, we're going to go back to more of a phonics-based experience. And that's what we're doing. And in Lexington, we have, we adopted a new literacy curriculum for the elementary school. I think it was K2, and now it's K3, and that is the foundations, and it's phonics-based. And that is what we're using. Now, we are still using something called Units of Study. And it's a revised Units of Study, as they look at it and say, okay, well, this part wasn't working, so we're going to do something different. It's, it's a constant process of looking at it and saying, is this working? No, let's, let's take what is working and stay with that. And then we're going to take out this other piece that isn't, and we're going to try something different.
So you do, you know, when you track, and, you know, these Globe articles were fairly recent, January. So now you said you were looking at MCAS results, did you say back in November?
I want to say October, yes, right, right.
So you're aware of this, you don't, you didn't, you know, and this is not a knock at the Boston Globe. You didn't need the Boston Globe article to tell you what you already knew.
No.
And you were, and you were trying to be proactive about it then. So I guess the question then comes, whenever you get the MCAS results, you guys examine them, and then you, then you sort of, you look at what the challenges are, and you try to come up with solutions, so it's an ongoing process?
I would say it's an ongoing process. I mean, we do it every year with those MCAS results. And, and there are, I mean, there are problems that are, I mean, it's, it's challenging, you know? You, you keep at it, and like, well, so that, those, you know, that group went up a little bit, but is it, is that quite, is it, I mean, maybe we, we'd like to see better, but...
One size fits all, it just doesn't work.
It doesn't. But we, and we also need to focus on, there's progress between, we need to celebrate all of the progress. For example, you might have a child who was in Needs Improvement and is, you know, moved up one. They're still not exceeding expectations, but they went from one to the other. It is, it is a process, and we need, we need to be looking at that and, and celebrating those wins as well.
And it's hard, because we look at Lexington students, and they, they're high achievers, for the most part. And, you know, I look at them, I remember back, you know, when they had the whole argument about weighted GPAs and all of that. Back in those days, yeah, it was, it was challenging, to say the least. But, you know, we have kids who are, who are stellar. But, you know, when you, when you think about, these kids are preparing themselves for life, and they want to go to the best colleges. But, you know, when you think about admissions, admissions, Harvard's going to say, okay, we have an allotment of maybe so many students from Lexington. And, you know, is a lot of, I've heard stories about how people, parents have put their kids in other schools, because they're afraid that they won't get selected for Harvard, because they know that Lexington, and I'm going off on a tangent.
Oh, no, no.
But it's, because they're, they're playing the odds, if you will. And that's, and that's never a good thing to do with someone's education.
It isn't, it isn't. I mean, I mean, yeah, you could move to Montana, but do you really want to do that?
Right, exactly. If you love horses, I guess.
If you love horses, it does, it is one of the things, Lexington is a wonderful community. But, you know, I have my three children, they went through K through 12. And, you know, they're LHS graduates, and the pressure that kids are under. It's, there are more than 10 colleges in the country.
Right.
There are, and you, there, your kids will be okay.
Well, I like that, your kids will be okay, they're, they're going to end up okay.
This is, the, the key to life is not going to one of, you know, a very small number of colleges. I was in a, an elementary school classroom, I mean, this was last year maybe? And I remember, I think it was a third grade classroom. And there was this adorable little girl, and she was telling me about how she was going to go to MIT. And I was like, okay, I said, that's great. And, and I'm, and she says, and, and some of the boys are, whoa, they don't let everybody into MIT. She's like, well, I could also go to Harvard. I'm like, hmm. So it is wonderful that third graders are, are thinking about, you know, their whole life, and, and they have these goals and aspirations.
But they're also kids, they need to be kids.
So I'm, I am pleased when I hear third graders talking about going to college someday. It's concerning to me when a third grader has identified two schools with an acceptance rate of under five, you know?
And when you advance seven years from there, then that's when they're feeling distressed, because they're trying to live up to a, you know, a goal.
And then the question is, where's the third grader? Where is that coming from? It can be older, it's, it's, this is the sea we're swimming in, it's difficult, but I just want that message.
But I'm glad, you know, that, and there seems to be support networks for kids, because we, our, our students do have a great amount of stress on them.
Absolutely.
And, and so, but what I'm seeing though, is particularly over the last few years, that, you know, it's been recognized in, in the school committee, the school administration, our, you know, Julie Hackett, Dr. Hackett, and I think has done an extraordinary job. I mean, that's, again, that's me saying that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. She's good at, she's great at certain things, but, you know, critical, she's criticized, you know, for transparency and other things, and, and I understand that. It's a tough position to be in. And as school committee people too, it's like, you know, you know, transparency is an important issue. But oftentimes, you know, you're talking about kids, and you're talking about private issues, and people have to understand that, you know, like, like, like in medicine, where they have the HIPAA laws, you know? You can't necessarily disclose certain things about certain students. And that makes a challenge, to have open, and, you know, meetings and, you know, so anyway, that's...
No, it is, and as I say, we, the school committee, we are transparent. Not, one, we believe in transparency, but two, it is also the law.
Right, it's the law.
We do this, there are, as I've said to people, there are no secret school committee meetings.
Right.
Not a thing.
And everyone, I know they're all, every single one of them is broadcast by Lex Media.
That is absolutely right, with our agendas posted in advance. So it, which, and that, sometimes, you know, people want us to act very quickly, like, we need you to do this right now. I'm like, okay, so open meeting law means I can't talk to more than one other person on the school committee unless we're in a posted meeting, and we have those every two weeks. And we have a tremendous amount of business that we have to get done during them. So it's, it's a bit of a push-pull, you know? It's, the more transparent you are, the less efficient you can be.
We've only got another minute or so left, we've got a short, I have explained this to the other, other guests, we have so many interviews that we would normally afford you 30 minutes, but it's, we're kind of sticking to 22 to 25 minutes. Anyway, you obviously enjoyed your time on the board. You've been incredibly productive from what I, from all accounts, you know? And not only that, you're taking great leadership in, in things like school building and debt exclusion. It's not an easy, it's not, it's not an easy thing. And also to have a life and a family, and, yeah.
Yes, yes. No, my husband does enjoy seeing me from time to time, you know, in the evenings. It's like, I come home from work and you go someplace. But I do enjoy it, but what I most enjoy, I know we've talked a lot about the buildings, but what I mainly focus on, the actual children. Like, who's in the building? You know, we're, we're going to talk about, we have an ed plan to talk about with the high school. We're looking at graduation requirements. I'm, the walls, all of that infrastructure is great. But then what are you actually doing there? What kind of education are the children getting? Are, and not, not just in terms of the quadratic equation and, and, you know, the 30 Years' War. You know, what kind of messages are our children leaving and going out into the world? And, and more important than almost anything is that we have students who treat one another with respect, understand that not everyone they meet is going to share their viewpoint, their values, that... And again, you, you need to treat people with kindness and respect. You need to work with each other.
Well, you've got, as you said, 2,395 individual people with individual thought processes.
And that's just at the high school. We have, we have close to 7,000 students overall.
But I think it's a good place to finish up, you know? Because oftentimes, we lose sight of the fact that, you know, this is about the kids.
Absolutely.
You know, the brick and mortar and all of that is important. But what's most important is, you know, kids feeling safe, feeling accepted, appreciated.
Yeah, and, and ready to go out into the world and share. It is scary, and to share... It is scary and to share what they have learned in Lexington and bring that to the larger stage.
Great. If somebody wants to learn more about about what your positions are, and I really wish we could spend more time talking about the whole gamut of issues. But I think people get a sense of your passion and where you stand. But if people want to learn more, that you have a website?
Yes, it's lenihanforlexington.org and it's L E N I H A N for lexington.org.
Great. Well, I want to thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
And I wish you all the best of the election.
Thank you.
You've you've done some extraordinary things and I just hope, I I hope, I wish you the best in the election.
Thank you. Well, and I appreciate the time. That's very kind of you.
Thank you very much and we'll see you again at the next, the next segment of Coffee with the Candidates.